Thank you. Roll call, Christina.
Bastian.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Housman.
Parsons.
Present.
Wakefield. Mayor Lumber.
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move back.
Motion of second to approve the agenda as presented, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any community input tonight? We have staff here. Let's get right to it, and who wants to kick it off with the insurance benefits?
Well, Casey's on his way, like I said, I forgot to tell him it was tonight, so he's on his way. You've got in your, in the packet for you just the current benefit summary for, for the employees. As to what we offer and premiums. So Casey's, Casey's gonna be here tonight to talk over some of the trends that he sees. And some other items. We did get all of the enrollment forms back from all of the employees. So we'll give those to Casey's for there and Sanford should be ready to go with those at any time. And then Walmart has all of the information that we need, and I believe United is as well. So we're ready to start looking at quotes. So tonight, we just want some direction as to what we want, or what the council would like to get quoted.
As far as deductibles, plans?
Yeah, deductibles, plans, copays, drug prescription deductibles, et cetera.
Comments from the council on that in particular?
Yeah, we're videoing.
So, I guess just a question, a question or a comment, I'm just curious for us to explore, and I stress the word explore, what, what happens if we get off the grandfather plan? And what happens if we explore moving to, looking at doing away with that reimbursement of the 1,500 and move to a, I don't know, $25, $30 copay, 2,500, 3,000 out-of-pocket type thing? And then the copay, if it's 2,530 for what I call a general practitioner? Or then it's 40, 50 for a specialist?
Yeah, general office.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious what that looks like. Not saying that we do it, and if we, and if we look at it, then can we look at how we can help the employees transition into that over a period of, I don't know what the years are. Two, three, four, I don't know, but that's what I'm curious to explore. So. And just, and then just see if we explore, what's the savings, what's the impact, just how's all that work?
If, if we make any modifications, it'll, it won't be on the grandfather plan.
Right, I understand.
It's limited to an increase of 5% in premium cost to the employee. Anything more than that moves us into a non, or ACA compliant plan. And Casey can explain that better than I can.
And I guess the reason I was looking just to explore it, I mean, is over the years, I mean, so much has changed with healthcare stuff that I'm just curious if we look at these changes, what's the impact? What's it mean?
In my conversations with Casey, we'd like to get, kind of hone in on, on some of the details, because we can get, we can get quotes on plans all over the place.
So some of the details I gave you, is that what you're?
Yeah, that's some of the stuff that we're looking at, you know, if you just look at deductibles, you know, right now it's 2,000, 4,000 per family. You know, we can explore deductibles anywhere from zero to 20 grand.
That's a bit much.
Well, that's just.
Four to five range.
Julie, what, what are you seeing out in the marketplace? I'd like to, you know, keep us competitive in the marketplace, but not be wild and crazy, you think?
I, I work with, I work with different, different companies, and the, the trend has been to, a lot of the smaller businesses prior to ACA had, you know, really nice plans, 500, 1,000 dollar deductibles. And so we're seeing those deductibles going up. I think that, that the, the research that I did recently with that market survey, the, the 2,000 to 2,500 is more the, the standard plan now for a deductible. It's just moved in that direction because of the cost, that, many companies have gone in that direction because of the cost of premiums related especially to the ACA changes. So, but there, there are also trends, companies are offering multiple options that sometimes might be more appealing to certain, certain demographic groups, for instance, the high deductible plans. The challenge with those is sometimes finding how to make that affordable too. If, if you can go with that higher deductible plan and the premium's lower, then you make it appealing by maybe supplementing with their personal HSA account. You know, putting, putting some of that cost savings into that account has been, has been interesting to some, some people. What I'm finding though, in the industry though, is, you know, it, it really depends on the individual, their age, their health situation, their family demographics as well, so. But we, we really have seen a trend away from the really low deductibles.
I guess that's the other thing, Brian, I'd, I'd add to exploring is if we went, if we offered two different plans, one just your standard deductible and one moving to a high deductible, that what it would take to add seed money for the employees for a year or two? Or something like that, I've seen, have you seen that done Julie, I've seen that.
Yeah, I've seen that, you know, employers going to that, those higher deductible plans with, which carry a lower premium and kind of sharing that, that cost savings with the employee and saying, well, this is costing us this much less, we'll split it and we'll give half of, half of that to you in the form of cash into your HSA. So that's, that is, that is, a lot of employers are doing that when they bring in that type of high deductible.
So I'd like to see that explored too, Brian.
That's, that's actually the same concept that the city implemented when they went with the deductible buy down. They increased the deductible and offset it with the employee share because it saved the city a fairly substantial premium. So it's the same concept.
So Paul, what do you guys have at the school for a deductible?
We have a 1,000 single, 2,000 family deductible. Which we also buy down the deductible to 500 single and 1,000 family.
Really? Wow. How about that deal?
Premium contributions, what's the school do there?
We pay 100% of the single and 70% of two-parter or family.
Is, is family considered anything more than single, or are there other steps for like just spouse or?
A two-parter, you can have a employee spouse or employee child under our plan. It's two people, family is three or more. Barb did ask me to share with you our stuff at the school, since we are the largest of employers in the, in the Brandon area. So our plans are similar as far as deductibles and, and copays and that stuff. I did see we have a little bit of prescription drug benefit than the city does. We have a $50 deductible rather than a $100 deductible.
It's such a, it's such a challenge to try to compare them, because there, there's, I mean, there's just so many moving parts.
Right, there is, there's a lot, but, I mean, I can tell you it's fairly similar. And that MRR buy down has been a very advantageous thing for us when we increased our, you know, our deductible used to be a 500,000, and then we took it to 1,000, 2,000, 10 years ago. And I reduced the premium by $250,000 a year. So that just compounds over 10 years. Now that's gross, net after reimbursing all that, it came out to about $1.7 million. Net savings to the school district by implementing that MRR plan. Because the, the concept about buying down that deductible is, and it, it works a lot better when you have a lot of people. But the concept behind it is that only on average, 15% of your people will meet an out-of-pocket maximum or meet their deductible and out-of-pocket maximum. So you're paying the premium on that, so raise that deductible and you're only 15% of your people are gonna meet that. So you pay that down for all the rest of the people, or those people that meet that, and you only have to pay it down for the 15% rather than the 100% of the people. So 85% of the people aren't gonna hit it. That's the, and ours just is true to form, man, I can, I can put a protractor on it or whatever you want to call it, every year, it's about 15% of our population hits that deductible out-of-pocket max.
Well, you just aged yourself.
It seems they haven't.
Wow. Well, my.
They don't use those anymore?
I, you know, I, I'm still beating the same drum that I've been beating for eight years. My whole concern is that I think the employees need some skin in the game after that four-year mark. For the whole family to have no cost, I just think that that is, I, I just don't think that that is sustainable. And it's not real life, and I, I know all the arguments, I've heard the arguments, I understand that. But the school is doing 70%. I'd be happy if the employees just paid 5% or 10%. I, I'm not looking for a big number, but I think we have to have some, something, something give there. I just really do. So that's, that's been my concern. I don't even really care what kind of plan we've got, I mean, I don't know.
Remember that the city employees are doing 75% year one, 50% year two, and 25% year three, so.
I think that's backwards, isn't that backwards?
It is. It makes it very hard to attract new employees.
If I can finish my point on the thing as, regarding your point of skin in the game, they're paying that as a, to get to the end result of after three years, some rainbow at the end of the tunnel. So there is some skin in the game, in my opinion.
I just don't think it's feasible. I mean, we have police officers coming in at $19 an hour, and then we expect them to pay 75% of a family healthcare plan, there's, there's just nothing left. I think it's, it may, I think we've been very fortunate to get the, the pool of applicants that we get. But I agree with Barb, I think it's backwards. I don't think we should make them pay that much upfront.
So I think, it's a few things that I learned when I met with majority of you guys right there. Our employees, they love their community and they love working here. And there's a reason why they're here, we have low unemployment. And if we want a mass exodus, then, you know, we, we have to deal with that should, you know, major changes be made to these healthcare insurance. I think we're kind of getting the cart in front of the horse. I think we need to set a goal of what we're trying to accomplish. So for example, we're talking about all these things, but yet what is our goal? What is the end result? Is it to stay on budget? If that's the case, what's our budget? I'd like Christina to maybe give us an outline of how the budget's created over the last, whatever, many years. So that we have an idea of what we're trying to accomplish. Because why would we change something that's gonna disrupt employees if we don't need to? For example, if we're able to stay within our budget, that doesn't make sense to me. And I listened very clearly to them, and it was a little bit painful, because I had to listen, you know, intently, and I had to listen to that rawness of what their concerns are. And I get the skin in the game, I agree with the mayor, they, they have their skin in the game. I also wonder, do we still allow a public comment? Can, can any employee get up and, and just speak on their behalf, or has that already been kind of? I'd like to, right now, just keep it to the, to the council if we could. So, so that, those are kind of my two things. I think we need to set a goal, or goals, such as affordable healthcare benefits that meets the city's budgets and employees' needs, maybe just make it simple. And then we need to figure out, how's that budget? And then what are accomplishments, what are we trying to accomplish with that? Because then I think from there, we can set the standard or the guidelines. But I agree with the mayor, again, I believe the employees already have skin in the game through that buyback, and, and they like what they have. And again, they don't necessarily need to be here, they want to be here, they love their job, they love working for this community. I think that says a lot.
I can speak on the budget and how I figured out during budget time is, we have a July 1 renewal, so the, from July 1 until the next July 1, so really the first part in 2020, July, or January 1st to June 30th, I already know what the rate's gonna be. So I take that rate, I already know what that's gonna be. And then for July 1 through December, I take that rate and do a 15% increase for that to figure out what I budget for the year.
One, one, five, fifteen?
15%.
Are you done, I'm sorry, are you done? Because if you're not, can you kind of just maybe give you historically over the last five years, what our budget has been?
Overall, for all, for health benefits? Or are you talking about percentage increase?
Just, you know, I mean, if, again, if we're trying to set a goal of what we're trying to accomplish with the grandfather plan or new plans or a combination thereof, do we have established budget that we've followed, say, for example, has it been 600,000, 500,000, 800,000?
Yeah, so for.
Do we have historical average over the last several years? Even with the, with the percentage up down, you know, and then what happens to that budget? Does that go into the general fund? And then should there be an increase the following year? Does that just get pulled out of the general fund? Should there be a savings from, you know, one year to the next, or vice versa?
So for 2019, I have 690,000 overall budgeted for our health benefits. That would be health insurance, dental, and modern women. 2018 was about 680, didn't change very much because of the decrease, so there wasn't too much of a change there. 2017, we had budgeted 645, so we're kind of in that range the last three years.
So do we think, is there like a certain percentage of our overall budget that would be for health insurance? Is, are, you know, is there some kind of a 3%? Is there anything like that out there from a standard?
Well, you, historically, what I tell groups to do on, am I supposed to be on?
I think you better, we're filming it, so.
Okay. What I've usually done on, on groups historically is I'll tell them to budget 1% per month, because that's what they generally tell us is medical inflation. So, and if you do that, I think, and I think that's what the city's done primarily, they've been, you know, 15 it sounds like, because that way you allow yourself, hey, if it's more than 12, you got a couple percentage points this way. If it's under, you're in good shape. So that's, that's what we usually, we, we don't have crystal ball, we can never tell you.
Right, but, so like, let's say of our overall budget, whatever, whatever general fund is, 6 million, 7 million, is there a factor, this might be a guideline for benefits, what we pay out for benefits?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, Barb.
It's a big number, and there's big numbers in every company, but I, I don't, I don't have any way to assess.
What I generally go with, Barb, is a 30%, the benefits will amount to a total of 30% of the employee's salary. Yeah, all benefits. FICA, retirement, health insurance, dental insurance, all that. When I figure the cost of employee, I just take their salary 50,000 times 1.3 and come up with 60, whatever.
And then you could spike it too.
Yeah.
That's typically the rule, so.
Okay, good, that helps.
And just historically, because I had, had heard this a couple times visiting with people, can you just give us an outline of the wage freeze that had occurred a while ago as the result of the health insurance changes? And just so, so we're kind of up to date on how that transpired and how that?
My understanding, back in the 90s, mid 90s, I think, early, early 90s, one of the council members had a, a family member that suffered a catastrophic health issue that nearly bankrupted him. So he came in with a proposal that he didn't want to have any city employees go through that financial crisis. So that's why they came up with this, the city's gonna pay for everything, the employees are gonna buy it. Three years, the, the way, or the employees forego wage increases for three years and offset the increase in premium costs by foregoing a salary. That's how it started. Thankfully Raleigh's been here long enough to remember that stuff. So that's, that's where it came from.
My understanding, that was even in the 80s, Brian, or wasn't that?
Late 80s or early 80s.
Okay, right, okay.
So I got it from 90.
Okay. Which, I would like to make a point on that, that, you know, nothing's forever, I get that. But we do also have to recognize and respect that what people before us have done, everything that's done is done for a reason, I assume. I mean, 30 years from now, they're gonna say, why did this council pass this resolution? Or allow chickens in the backyard, or whatever. There's, there's a reason for every decision that's made. So I think that there has to be some level of respect for those decisions and, and at least give it the justice that is due.
Right, but I also think we need to explore it, we can't just accept everything. So where is our, so when we look at our benefits, are we in that 30% range? Where are we at, any idea?
We did look.
I'd be curious just to see, I mean, if, if, you know, if we're not out of.
If I could just pass this out to, I'd done this earlier, on the, on the actual situation where the employees did without a raise for three, three years. If I could just take a couple minutes to explain my, my math there and what I did. I took an employee, I don't know what an employee made back then, but I just said $20,000 the employee made. Took that times three years of a 5% raise, which was the CPAI, average of the CPAI over the 80s. So three years of 5% raise would be compounded of a value of $3,152. And then I got a present value of that today, what that would be today, taking a 2% factor and a 3% factor over those 30 years or, or how many years it would be, you can plug in whatever number you want, or go in the middle of the 2 and 3%, I don't care. But you can see that it comes out to either somewhere in between 5,700 and 7,700 of what that foregoing of the raise was 30 years ago. So I think that's important to see that. That these employees that gave up a raise three years ago, and giving up that raise, you're gonna say, well, that was 30 years ago, that doesn't make any difference. But it, it does, folks, because the, the level that these guys are being hired at today is based on the level that they were at last year, and it just compounds. And if they have a hiring schedule that's saying that they make $19 an hour this year, or last year, and it goes up to $20 an hour next year, those three years with the, when there was no salary increase, it, it changes it.
Mayor, mayor, if I might, all we're doing is looking at ideas. I think that we're kind of going down the path where we're gonna make some changes. That is, that is not my intent, so I, I guess, I, I'd just like to look at some ideas. We've been trying to do this for years, and you haven't been on this board that long. I just want to look at some ideas. It doesn't mean I want to change anything, but I don't think it's also fair to not look. So that's what I want from Casey, let's just look. We look at other things, so I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse in that respect, that you think we're gonna change things, I don't, I don't know, but I'd like to look.
That's, that's entirely your prerogative, but I, with all due respect, I'm, alls I'm doing is pointing out facts too.
Okay.
And I think people know, need to know the facts behind the decisions.
I'm okay with that. So we talked a little bit earlier, sorry, we got, can. What we wanted to, just some ideas to look at.
Yeah. Well, we're in the process of it right now, I think the employees have got applications out on several carriers that we're looking at, so hopefully we'll get those back soon, so we can expedite this process as quickly as possible. I've got everything on the Wellmark side, is, everything is together on that, we have all of our options, we have, everything is, is there. We just need to figure out, A, we'll get those, we'll get those applications in, they'll get us some rates. And those will be, those should be hard rates, meaning they shouldn't change much based on, you know, they're gonna have, they're gonna be underwritten because the, the health history is gonna be in them. Obviously Blue Cross already knows our health history, so those rates are solid. And so once we have that, we can really kind of build or whatever, look at whatever options within budgets that you want to look at. So you get different ideas, if we want to get into offering multiple plans, designs, and have people choose. It's all, to me, this really comes down to you guys, are you gonna require additional funds from the employees? Because that changes, if that's the case, it changes everything. And that kind of will, that kind of will put us to where we, it'll kind of point us in the direction we'll have to go in our benefits and what we, what we design. Because if, if, if we, as you guys know, this has been, we've probably been over this over and over, on the grandfather plan, we can't change more than 5%, okay? So, now we could do a two and a half and a two and a half, we could do something like that. And that's still within, within the boundaries of the, of the, of the ACA. But if we do those, make those changes larger than that, it's gonna push us into the large group segment, not a big deal. We can do that. Rates are, from what I've seen recently, they're fairly comparable. They're gonna be a little bit higher, not a bunch. But again, it's, that's, I think that's where we're at, is, and that's gonna point us in the direction of where we go on what you guys decide on employee contribution. And that's in my opinion. But we'll have it, everything you want to look at, we'll have it.
Can you give us a brief overview of the difference between the grandfather plan, the ACA large group, medium group, kind of comparable to the grandfather plan? Just so, as part of this work session, so we can kind of start processing some of those?
Sure, sure, so on the, I mean, like I said, rate wise, you're probably looking at a couple, maybe a couple percent change there on, on the rating wise, going to the 51 plus, they call that, that segment. Benefit wise, the biggest thing that you're gonna see that you're gonna, that's gonna be added to the benefits is going to be a preventative benefit that's gonna be covered at 100% coverage. So meaning their annual physicals, or mammograms, or pap smears, those types of deals, those are gonna be covered at 100%. 100%. No, they don't have any dollar cost on that compared to where they're at now, where that stuff is on a copay. I don't have that information in front of me right now, but I believe our copay is 20. Does that sound right? So, they have a $20 copay on that. That's going to be their biggest, the biggest change they have benefit wise.
Is there a difference between the ACA medium group and large group in terms of like how they compare? Because I think last time we talked about, you know, could we compare the current grandfather plan to ACA medium group and a large group? And like, what's the difference? What is medium group and large, what is that?
Well, the large, yeah, you're going to have, I mean, we're going to probably be able to match up some plans fairly close to apples to apples. But, we're also going to have, you know, when we tweak things, again, our out-of-pockets are probably, that's another thing, you're going to probably see Brett is out-of-pocket, it's going to change mainly on the family composition, not so much on the single. I think we can keep that fairly close to where we're at, but on the family is probably where you're going to see the biggest, the biggest jump. Again, it just depends on, there's so many plans for us to choose from. We need, you know, we'll need to just go and do our homework and figure out what everybody, you know, what everybody agrees to do and find what's best suited. Benefits wise, we can keep them fairly close.
And again, why would the out-of-pocket change?
It's based on the, so they have, in the ACA, they have a, basically a chassis that the government puts out and says, hey, you've got, this thing's got to fit this chassis. Boom, 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 boom. And then the insurance companies have got to design the plans around that chassis. They didn't have that, they didn't have to do that in the grandfather clouds. They could kind of build the plans the way they wanted to. So, and I could get into, I'm not an actuary, but there's actuaries to get involved, there's metal tiers, platinum, bronze, gold, silver that they have to abide by in these chassis. And so, these companies have had to raise the out-of-pockets to make it fit within that chassis from the feds. Is what it basically boils down to.
Have we had any input from the employees about long-term disability, or is that covered through South Dakota Retirement? It isn't, is it?
No.
Any push to have that? I mean...
We put together a proposal, Dan did that, two or three years ago, to convert that Modern Woodman, the 2166 payment to Modern Woodman, see what we can do for life insurance and short-term, long-term disability. Employees weren't interested. If I'm paraphrasing the meeting that we had, we invited all the employees to a meeting, showed them what we could do with that 2166. No interest.
As a financial advisor, that's, I think, a huge risk, and so I was disappointed to see that we didn't offer it.
Julie, did you have an impression of that? I mean, could it have been maybe portrayed differently, or?
Well, it was presented, you know, by Gary Basika and Dan to the employees. I'm not sure that they understood necessarily what they were going to lose in that 2166. I was a little concerned at the time, because I don't think that the employees realized that they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to lose those policies that they, that were being paid for with that 2166, and that it would be replaced with these additional benefits. I think that they may have, may have felt that they were going to be losing the policies that they had, and that wasn't the case. But, there was just, there was a lot of discussion, and most people were just like, thank you for considering this, but I think, I feel like I've already taken care of things with my 2166, and so that's what they decided. There were some good options that were presented. I think we also proposed a group life insurance with, I can't remember what the benefit amount was, but we were proposing replacing the dollars spent on those individual plans with adding a long-term disability and a life, group life insurance policy. And the employees really kind of unanimously decided that they really wanted to have those individual decisions that they made working with Modern Woodman. Some of them do life insurance, some of them do annuities, and others do long-term and short-term disability through Aflac. So, I think they, they just, they did speak. They told us that they didn't want us to pursue it anymore.
Brian, I would correct you a little bit on the, Brian, in the South Dakota Retirement, there is a component for long-term disability within South Dakota Retirement. You practically have to be dead to get it, but there is a component in there. It's very, very difficult to get, but it is there. We at the school district have chosen to, because it is so tough to get it, we have chosen to implement a long-term disability policy in addition to the South Dakota Retirement, because it is just so stringent to get into it. So...
So, you have an additional policy?
We do.
I wanted to kind of amend things, too, because Tammy recently has spoken with the Aflac agent as entering our team, and they no longer offer short-term and long-term disability. It's actually an old plan that they don't sell anymore. So, it does limit employees' access to that. If they've got it, they can keep it, but they don't even market that anymore. So, just wanted to update that. Thanks.
Can I, so I just wanted to add, I mean, on the, we see the STD used more than the LTD. And so, but I don't, I mean, I don't want to say, hey, one's better than the other, but that's the one you see, and it's mainly for women on the pregnancy side. That's where we see that being utilized more.
Can I ask one question, Casey? If we are considering and we want to consider maybe multiple plans, is it an option to keep the grandfathered plan and add another plan, or it's all or nothing? Okay.
Unfortunately, we, yeah, and I've even been asked before, hey, can we offer both, can we offer multiple carriers? And that's a no-no. Yeah, they don't allow that either, so.
If I can, Casey. We talk a lot about here at the council level, only because I've been here a few short months, but we've talked about multiple plans. How many, I just don't see how you can justify a multiple plans when you have 37 total employees on the health insurance, Casey. How is that going to...
Yeah, I mean, it really, again, that, really, the multiple plan deal works mainly on, depending on if there's a higher contribution level. We see that a lot, like on a 50% contribution level. You know, maybe the employee's paying 50% of the cost, and that's where we see companies wanting to do, offer more options, so that, hey, maybe that cost to this employee is, you know, that 50% contribution is, it's just too much for them. So, they'll take maybe a lesser benefited plan or a cheaper plan just to make it fit their budget. So, you know, in your guys' situation right now, I don't think offering multiple options is, I mean, unless there's things that change, I don't think it would, who would take it? I mean, if things stay the same, you're not going to have people opting for a $4,000 deductible versus the $2,000 that they have right now, if it, you know. Does that make sense?
So, I guess the two things that I'm looking for is, we think that the grandfathered plan is very attractive. So, but I'm just curious what a different plan, a large group plan would look like from a cost standpoint and from a benefit standpoint. It's not about taking benefits away from the employees. I mean, if we could get the preventative care taken care of, that's a great thing, especially for women. So, that, I'm interested in that. And I'm disappointed to you that they're not interested in the disability, because just from what I see, disability is, it's generally not an accident. It's more like cancer, or MS, or something like that, and you have all of the health expenses and you're still alive. Life insurance, at least you collect on it because you're dead. But, disability can be very devastating to a family, and so I think that that is a hole in our benefits package. So, Paul, on yours, do the employees pay for it, or does the school pay for it?
No, no, no. The school pays for it.
The school pays for that?
And more money fell out of my pocket when I walked into this boardroom than it cost them. Long-term disability is pennies.
They both really are. I mean, they're both... I mean, they're both, I would, I agree with you, Barb, on, I think there's more of a need for disability insurance than there is life insurance. I mean, yeah, I think everybody needs life insurance, but there's more chance that you're a disabled than your life, than, you know, obviously, you die, you die. But, it is inexpensive. We have, you know, we have over the years quoted STD, LTD, and a life product for here. We've done that. It's, for whatever reason, it's never gotten off the ground. I think everybody is really comfortable with their Modern Woodman here, and I think so that may be one of the deals. But, it is an inexpensive product. We're going to quote it. I think it was, you guys asked me to do that. So, once we receive the censuses and we get the information, we're going to provide that for you if you still want it, and I'll let you guys decide on where that goes.
Casey, could you help us understand maybe what might be a benefit for some of our employees that are interested in a higher deductible with the HSA? Why is that HSA a good thing for them?
Well, I would, I would say it's a good, if they're healthy, and they have, you know, they're healthy, we see it usually in younger people, maybe some that have a little more expendable income. But, the good thing about it is that money is, it grows every year. It's tax-deferred, and they can, it can build up over time, and they can then use that for any type of medical, you know, service. They can get a, it's no different than their Flex Plan. They're going to get a card that they can, that they can just use, and they'll swipe that at the doctor, the pharmacy, wherever they're at, just like any other thing. You know, the thing that we've been disappointed with over the years on HSAs is the cost difference between a full-blown medical plan like we have versus an HSA. For whatever reason, they just haven't priced them very aggressively to really make people move. I think the idea of them is great, but they just haven't made it attractive enough to really force those people to give up those first-dollar benefits, like the copays and the prescription cards and stuff like that. I would, if we got to the point of having an option, I would include that in as an option for somebody to do, because there would be, there would be some premium savings there. But, are we, you know, again, are you going to be able to, it's, to me, it all comes down in contribution, which way you're going to drive people to, and what plans they're going to take.
The thing I've found, my concern with HSAs are people don't fund them. And so, they've got a lower deductible, you know, or they've got a lower premium, but they don't fund the HSAs, and then they're in trouble. And so, I'm sort of a pessimist on that just from experience.
Well, I think what everybody forgets about them, yeah, they come with, they come with lower premiums, but then somebody has to fund it. So, it's either going to be the employer that funds it, or it's going to be the employee that funds it, or it can be a combination of both. But, it does need to get funded. And if you think about it, what are we going to, what are you going to fund? Are you going to fund $25, $50, $100? I mean, what is it going to be? And then figure, you know, figure that for an annual, okay, so I've got, I've got $100 in there every month, so I've got $1,200 for the year. It doesn't get you far if you have a claim. And that's why I say, healthy people, younger healthy people, I think they work, they have the potential to work really good. But, you know, you're just, we never know. And, but to me, my experience has been with them, again, the premium has not been enough to really drive people to them.
So, a couple thoughts. First of all, we have to keep in mind that these are benefits. So, if we think we're saving money, to me, if it's my benefit and you're going to take $500 out of my pocket, I expect $500 on my salary, for example. To me, if that, so, we have to kind of wrap our minds around, again, getting back to the goal. What is our goal? What is our budget? And can we maintain that? And, because I think if we, I think it's a great idea to look at all these other things. I think we all are in consensus that we should look at the grandfather plan compared to medium and large group, ACA. We should look at health savings account. I agree with that. I agree with the disability. But, again, we've got to look at this from, if you just step back a little bit, yes, we have to be responsible to the taxpayers and those people that vote us in. But, also, again, we have to kind of be mindful of what we're trying to accomplish. And getting back to what the mayor was trying to say earlier, that we're not, this is a work session, but at the same aspect, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, sacrifices that have been made over the years, and there are quite a few folks that are really quite pleased with what they have for reasons, because it's a rich, it's a rich benefit. But, at the same aspect, there's the thought that that's been earned over time by the buy-in and those types of things. And so, I personally want you to continue to move forward with looking at those things that we just discussed. I do, I would like this council, including the new members that are going to be coming in, to encourage you to figure out what is the goal. And then, you know, let's keep a budget, and then let's figure where that is. I'm sure there's some concessions. The survey that I read, I read every page, and I can't recite what I read, but, I mean, there's probably people willing to do things like deductibles or copays or whatever. But, you know, what are our goals? I mean, we have to have a goal, and then from that goal, we can set these other parameters while you're looking at those things. I don't want it to be held up, though. I want, you know, there's a priority to keep this moving forward, and I want to make sure that you keep doing that. But, that's what I would like to see as well. And I completely agree with you guys on moving forward with looking at those things, so we can kind of compare apples to apples.
Well, let's get an idea of what our benefit percentage is. That's the place to start. And if we're out of whack one way or the other, maybe we're too low. I don't know. But, again, this is just looking. I mean, we haven't looked at this for 15 years. And so, I don't want people to get all shook up about it. Probably, nothing will change, but we got to look at it.
Christine, of the $690,000, how much was health insurance? Do you have that handy? In the summer's work session, I had $522,000 number written down for health insurance. Do you know where that came from?
Current rates, right about all?
Okay, that's fine.
Does that give you enough to look at?
I guess I don't necessarily agree with Brett on the health savings accounts. I don't know that it's worth our time to look at that.
You know what? Here's the deal. They're going to be in, every packet we get from these carriers, it's going to be in there. And so, whether you want to or you're not, it's going to be in there. We can certainly take those pages if you don't want, and we can throw them away. But, they'll be in it.
So, is our goal to see a much less, is that your goal, much lesser expensive? We've got to tell him, because he doesn't know, he can make it very less expensive by just having a $20,000 deductible, Barb. He needs some direction on what we're going there.
I think Chuck gave him, I think Chuck had a deductible.
Did I keep you with that, funnily enough? Yeah, take a look at the grandfather plan, take a look at someone hired deductibles in the $4,000 to $5,000 range, with or without HSAs.
Actually, it was...
Take a look at higher copays.
But, that was going to be phased in over a period of time.
Copays aren't really, I mean, they're going to...
You know, copays, you know, you're at 20. You're probably going to see maybe a 40 and an 80. I mean, that's, you know, that'll be maybe an option. So, they'll give you 40 on a, I mean, that'd be a higher option. So, that's going to give you 40 on your primary care physicians, and then 80 on a specialist is what it would be. So, it'd be a dual copay. That'd be one of the things that you'll probably have an option to look at. The $4,000 deductibles, yep, we'll have them. And like I said earlier, those are going to be the plans, probably they're going to, that out-of-pocket on the family for sure is going to be, it's going to be, it's going to increase. So...
So, can't we just look at, if we kept what we have in the grandfathered plan and compare it to a large plan?
For sure.
I mean, that's really what I'm looking at, because I've heard year after year after year, the grandfathered plan is the way to stay. And it may very well be, but I want proof of that. That's what I'm looking for. I'm not even looking for the deductibles to go up. I just want to make sure that we are having the right plan, right?
Yeah.
That's all I want.
I guess I'd like to see a few options so that we can explore doing some of these other things. Maybe making a few small tweaks, freeze up $100,000, and then we can include long-term disability or life insurance.
Also, there's a somewhat of a challenge between age groups, right? So, us back there have different requirements, different ideas than, say, my son is going to hopefully start working for the city pretty soon for the summer, but... start working for the city pretty soon for the summer, but, so I think that's where some of those challenges need to be at least thought into the HSA, or maybe some other ideas that Dana has. Because each of us, as we age, our aging population's gonna have different thought processes and what our expectations are for our insurance.
Yeah, and again, I'll just, I guess I'll just reiterate what I said earlier on the HSAs, Brett. I mean, is it, to me, you, you wouldn't take an HSA under the current structure of what the, you know what I mean? As far as what the contribution is. That's all gonna, to me, that'll all be driven on whatever you decide on, on contribution levels, because eh, with all things being equal, I would never even advise that. I mean, you know, so, uh, but we'll have it, we'll have it.
Well, we can't change the contribution levels if we stay with the grandfathered plan.
Correct.
Correct.
Five, five percent.
Five percent. Okay, so we can do 5%.
Correct.
But it does limit us in that respect.
It does. It does.
So I guess...
It's, it's the, it's definitely the downside of the, you know, of the grandfathered plan. I think, I think the world of the grandfathered plans. I, if I wish I had, I wish I had every single client still an old grandfathered plan, to be honest with you. Um, but we didn't have that foresight at the, you know, when that was all changing. We got, I'd like to sit here and tell you, hey, I'm a great agent, and I, and I could see that coming to my, you know, we got lucky. We got, we've gotten really lucky here on it, and so have my other clients that were able to stay with it. Other than that, I wish they all would've stayed. But I understand there's budgets, there's money, things we have to do. We'll look at all of them.
What's our timeframe on turnaround, so that we can kinda expedite these things?
Yeah, we're, we're waiting, again, we're waiting on the applications to get in from the employees. Uh, hopefully this week, maybe? Okay. So we'll have them tomorrow, so we'll get them to the carriers, uh, tomorrow. And, let's see, tomorrow's Wednesday. I, I would hope by the middle of next week, maybe we'll have, we'll have some, some answers on, on that. So, it shouldn't take too long. Maybe, you know, maybe, maybe we'll have by Friday. It's just, it's, you never know, but we'll get them in as soon as possible.
What are your thoughts on a second work session to review that stuff versus just have that information? I think that as, as much as I'm sure none of us would wanna have another meeting, I think, in the in-person type stuff, it says, can we maybe make some decisions on setting that date, so we can make sure that, that this gets expedited and looked into?
Maybe we can have the quotes in advance to look through them, to bring our questions to that work session, rather than just being introduced to all of that data.
Yeah, I think, I think time-wise, as long as we get, like I said, if we're gonna get those tomorrow, I think we're gonna be in really good shape. Um, we'll, we'll have the last, what we'll have, the last week and a half of, of April, and we'll have all of May, and then, just so you guys know, usually, usually a drop-dead time on either renewals or placing new business is, again, a very, from company to company, but I like to tell people, hey, don't be, let's, let's get everything done by the 15th of June. You know, that'd be for, that'd be your last in my thing. Now, some carriers are gonna let you go all the way to the end of the month, if they want to, to, you know, to get that business for July 1, but I would assume you guys don't wanna do that, but, so I, I think that's what we're looking at. We have a good amount of time left to, to get that figured out. And we'll have it. I think we'll have it next week.
Well, and June, our meetings are the 3rd and 17th, so keep that in mind. Um, Mayor, do you know your work comp rate at the school, your average at the school?
We have three different rates. Uh, plus wherever clerical, professional, and, uh, all others. Yeah, I'm assuming the clerical's gonna be similar to ours, .3.
So it's probably gonna be close to .3 average? Yeah, that's fine. We can kinda give a percentage, and I've done very rough numbers, I don't really wanna get too in-depth tonight, but we do have to remember that officers get 8%, not a 6%
For, for South Dakota.
for retirement. And, uh, our work comp, I'm gonna guess, is a lot higher than most, um, because we have officers, street, water, sewer, that are, their rates are over, over $2. Streets is $5 of work comp, for work comp. So, I can get those numbers and kinda back those out a little bit, or let you know the difference on those?
Julie, what's, what's an average contribution for a retirement plan? Is it 3%, 4%? What would you say?
I would say that, that average is probably 3 to 6 would be more the top end, but probably 3 is, is probably more typical of a match.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion second to adjourn. All's in favor?
Aye.
We are 5:30.